Good evening. The February 13th, 2023 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, February 13th, 2023 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Excuse me, President Tominski?
Aye. Tonight's public hearing is regarding a permanent easement for Pierce Elementary School Board Secretary Day. Have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing?
We have not received any written correspondence.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board regarding the published hearing?
We have no one who has requested to address the board.
Public hearing is officially closed. Superintendent Sathoff, I'll turn the meeting over to you for your report.
Great. Okay, this first slide that's coming up here is one of a variety of Black History Month activities in CRCSD. This morning was the 5th Annual Black Excellence Assembly at Washington High School. Students, staff, and community members heard life lessons and music numbers from local musical artists, listened to special guest speakers, and enjoyed entertainment from many Washington student groups. And I heard that that was a very nice event. Here are some pictures of the Jefferson High School adapted music program. Shout out to the co-directors of vocal music, Jonathan Nezwick and Jesse Bungie. They are providing a weekly adaptive music program to special education students, and students are learning all aspects of music during that weekly session and are really learning a lot and loving it. And a bonus shout out to Jefferson as well. Jefferson Show Choir won all of the awards at their last competition this past weekend. They won Best Band, Best Choreography, Best Vocals, Best Male Soloist, Best Female Soloist. The West Side delegation was the grand champion, and Ovation was fifth. So, very, very successful day for them. Here we have TAF's Future Cities team. That's a team from TAF Middle School that took top honors at the Iowa Region Future City Competition, and students of Team Morigna put together a winning presentation and the best essay about a city that exists 100 years in the future. And it incorporates futuristic solutions to climate change. So, Team Morigna will compete later this week at an international competition in Washington DC. So, congratulations to Here we have Kennedy High School's Erin Stecker being honored. The National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association has honored Kennedy's Activities Director Erin Stecker with the Bruce D. Whitehead Distinguished Service Award. Stecker is one of just 11 members honored from across the United States. So, congratulations to him. And last but not least, snow makeup days. There you see the calendar. Just a reminder about those makeup days. CRCSD students and staff will now report to school on Monday, February 27th, as the makeup date for January 4th. And then we had a snow day, February 9th, and that day will be made up on May 31st. Last day of school will be June 1st, and if there are additional snow school locations going on, those make up days to that. Well, that's a wrap up for tonight.
Are there any board reports?
Yes, I have a brief legislative report. So, we know that the SSA has been set at 3%. So, that will allow Carla to start working on a budget, probably late into the night, trying to figure out how to make that all work for us. Obviously, 3% is much less than we were hoping for, but better than we've gotten in previous years. So, I guess that's positive. There are, there are a number of bills in the Capitol that will have an impact on public schools. As you've been reading about in the media, there are a lot of pieces of legislation around parental notification of gender identity, instruction on gender identity, sexual orientation, what sort of name we can use in the classroom. There's a bill that prohibits the use of any name other than what's on a birth certificate. So, lots of pieces of legislation around those issues. We also, there, there's a bill taking a look at teaching licenses. One of the aspects of that that's currently under consideration is to allow a teaching certificate via online study without any student teaching or classroom experience. So, that obviously is quite concerning. We want our teachers to be highly prepared before they come to us. There was a rollback in private school testing, the voucher plan that passed earlier in the session. There's a bill now that would allow private school parents to opt out of state mandated testing. So, again, we see that that playing field is pretty uneven between public and private schools. So, that also is a concern. So, there's a lot to, a lot to be watching. The first funnel, I believe, comes up the first part of March, and that will start winnowing out some of these bills to see what, what stays alive and what goes on. Just a reminder that IASB Day on the Hill is tomorrow, and I think some of us plan to be there, and we'll be talking to our area legislators about many of these issues. So, we'll keep you posted on how that goes. Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Are there any other board reports? Next, we will hear from those who have requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we do.
How many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
Four.
Four. With four speakers this evening, each will be given up to five minutes for their remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have requested, if you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all, all those in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using any personal names and information during public comment. Now, before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Laurel, will you please call our first speaker?
Our first speaker this evening is Mary McHenry. Mary is here from Cedar Rapids, and she's representing herself and coworkers across the district. Mary?
Mary McHenry. I live at 2615 Buchanan Drive Southeast. I'm here to talk about what's going on in our buildings with us having mandated 30-minute lunches. According to the agreement that I fall under, it says that we should have a duty-free lunch provided. I feel like the language doesn't say that that 30 minutes is mandated. And the language does technically say that we should get two 15-minute paid breaks, but nobody's making sure that I get my paid breaks. All of this is taking admin away from things that they should be doing. They should be dealing with students. They should spend an hour on Monday going over payroll, and that should be done. And now, they're getting things pushed back at them. Now, are we all, I, we like having our lunches, but there are times when we are staffed as we are, that a 30-minute lunch is neither advisable, or how do you make it happen? If you are with a medically sensitive child, and you are on your lunch break, and that child has an issue, and you get called back out of your lunch, or, or do you just say, "Nope, I'm on my 30-minute lunch"? I think that clocking back in is, is the correct thing to do. But are we going to now be penalized and have this put in our HR file, which a lot of us are worried that like that is going to happen? I'm on the naughty list. I did not take a lunch on Friday because we were short two secretaries, and I'm one of the other, I'm one of the people that's trained to give out medication. So, I gave lunch to the Health Secretary, and by the time the day was done, I didn't get my lunch. Now, no big deal. I can just leave 30 minutes early. No, we can't do that anymore, we've been told. I've heard from people in my building that it feels dehumanizing to be micromanaged when, as adults, if it was working for us, why not let it stay that way? In our current world, jobs should really be becoming more flexible. That is the way of the world. You know, jobs that offer flex time, or that take into consideration emergencies and family things. Hey, you know what? I'm gonna be a half an hour late every Tuesday because my kid has a club that I need to take them to. Maybe I'll take my lunch early. No, we cannot do that. So, I have a lot of unhappy people that I hear from in our building, and unhappy employees look for other jobs. We can go to Clear Creek, Amanda. We can go to Prairie. We can go to Lynnmar and get paid more than we do at Cedar Rapids. If you look out on our website, how many paras are we short right now? And are we trying to drive away the ones that we have? You need us. We are important. But, a lot of us have had careers before this, and we can figure something else out if we are unhappy or it feels toxic. So, what, what, I guess what I'm asked by a lot of my coworkers is what is the end game from having a lax of flexibility when needed to cover a family emergency, to cover a student emergency? You know, there are times when the Health Secretary and the nurse are called out. They gotta go to a classroom. Yes, I have to run down and take, I have to take their place. So, I feel like just sticking, I'm sorry, I'm losing. It's not a gray, it's not an all or nothing thing. There should be some room for gray in our days. And I am worried that you are going to drive away some of your great employees by micromanaging them and making them feel like they aren't important or valued. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Kristin Pardubski. Kristin is here representing the Cedar Rapids School Foundation with their spring update.
Thanks, Laurel. I'm Kristin Pardubski. I live at 4911 Milbrook Court Northeast. I'm the Chair of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on the foundation's work. For anyone who's new to this, we are a nonprofit with a mission to provide financial support and promote excellence in the Cedar Rapids schools. We have an all-volunteer board, and since our last report, we've welcomed three new trustees, Claudia Lindeman, Anne De Giacomo, and Erin Loon. As of January 1, I'm the new chair, and I'll be around for two years. Our last foundation report to you was in August, at which time we shared with you our fiscal year, financials, end of year, which were strong and showed the 13th year of positive growth. Since that last update, we've been honored to have been chosen by Superintendent Bush as the recipient of her memorial funds dedicated to the SAFE program fund, which were her wishes. As background, SAFE stands for Sports, Academics, Fine Arts, and Enrichment Fund, and it provides financial assistance to at-risk and low-income students who want to participate in school-sponsored extracurriculars but who would otherwise lack the financial ability to do so. In addition to that, we have been celebrating our 40th anniversary with an updated logo, a variety of social media postings, and an annual fund appeal. We're also doing professional development grants, which will be awarded to eight Cedar Rapids educators to, who are seeking to advance their own education. Our Alumni Relations Coordinator resigned this year due to personal reasons, and we are reevaluating that position. Our much-loved tradition of senior walks for each of the four high schools will be taking place during May. And last of all, we are prepping for scholarship season. The foundation will award more than 60 scholarships, totaling over $50,000 to post, for post-secondary plans for both academics and the trades this spring. This past summer, most of our high schools chose to bring their in-school scholarships to us at the foundation for donor and staff efficiencies. So, that's my update. I thank you for your time, unless you have any questions. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Kate Hoag. Kate is here representing Cedar Rapids Education of Organizational Professional Associates, Parrot Educator Associates. She's here to talk about mandatory lunches.
Secretaries.
Secretaries, thank you.
Office professionals. Kate Hoag, Cedar Rapids, 2750 Otis Road, Southeast. Dignity, respect, belonging, and team-building, these are the attributes of the positive culture we strive to have in every building. These are the attributes that are the goals of our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and even the DOJ work that we'll hear about today. These are the goals of our employee agreements that state that a 30-minute break for lunch should be offered. These are the attributes of our staff when they show support in the building by working through their lunch break, when other staff are not available to meet student needs. These attributes are even supported when the district allows flex time. The autocratic communication strategy and the hounding that has followed up to the district mandated lunch break is undermining belonging, team-building, respect, and dignity. We can do better. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Joe Ossie. Joe is here from Cedar Rapids to speak about solar panels and climate changes.
My name is Joe Ossie, 2245 Birchwood Drive Northeast, Cedar Rapids. We have an organization called Veterans for Peace, and our interest is working on climate change, global warming, et cetera. We think the school board should have solar panels in the new issue, in the new, what do you call it? The...
Bond issue facility, master plan?
Yes. Solar panels are educational for the, for the students. It's good for our climate, et cetera, et cetera. And as you look around town, you can see solar panels in all kinds of industrial locations, as well as residential locations. The school board should be leading, leading, not following. Second issue, Wilson High School, it should be looked at twice. It looks like a very good building to a lot of people. Electric vehicles should be on your agenda, and thank you very much for your time.
That was all the speakers? A motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Let me back up one second. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote? I thought I missed something, yeah. Director Humbles, yep?
It's BA 23011 on student discipline. My question is, I'm looking at the various levels and wanting to know what type of training will be provided to staff so everyone is on the same page?
This is under the policy manual review.
Yes.
Apparently, it's the board policies that we send out to staff, and they review after they're updated. So, it's kind of backwards of what would be normal protocol, but that's the way the DOJ wants it to have the board policies approved and then the training to follow. We're working on what those pieces look like regarding de-escalation, student discipline, what suspension changes are. We'll start with the administrative team and then start and build down capacity through our buildings as well, but still creating the details of that plan.
So, when, when will we know, when will your plans be finalized for that? I know you're working on it, but do you have a timeline?
So, Lisa and I and the team have been meeting, yes. If this gets approved tonight, we will roll out and start probably the next admin meeting that we have, do the training with them on the next pieces. But there's a lot of different pieces and details to this, and there's some changes after we, we move forward that they're making changes to. So, we're also trying to be cautious not to train people and then have to retrain people, because we have a case of that going on now, too. So, trying to really get that confirmation for them to, from the DOJ, but really being intentional as well about we can't just put out new policies and expect people to have new behaviors that follow without training and providing them the, the tools to be able to utilize. So, I would say within the next couple of weeks will for sure be step one of that. And we can share the details and the breakdown, because there'll be quite a few pieces to that as well with the board.
Thank you.
I just want to be pulled for comment, question, or separate vote. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Now, this is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Tominski?
Aye. Next is a summary update of the DOJ agreement. Yeah, I will turn the meeting and presentation over to Lisa Glenn.
Good evening. Okay, the purpose of this presentation is to provide a mid-year report. You will be receiving a report twice per year as just a status update on how we're doing with regard to the Department of Justice settlement. So, this is your first update. So, following an extensive investigation just of allegations of, by the DOJ and the US Attorney's Office for the Northern District, on September 12th of 2022, the Cedar Rapids Community School District entered into an agreement with the US Attorney's Office and the DOJ to improve delivery of services with student, of services for students with disabilities. The district fully cooperated in good faith with that investigation and are, have entered into the agreement in good faith, and all of the work that we're doing now in our buildings with all of our good people is also in good faith. I'd just like to point out, too, that our, as summary of the settlement agreement and also the fully executed settlement agreement are still available on the website under the Students and Families tab, if anyone wants to go there. So, the requirements of that settlement agreement, one of the big things, probably the biggest thing so far that has been done, you all are aware of, and that's policy updates. And so, Nicole kind of spoke a little bit to this also, that the policy updates were required, and specifically, most of them were required, well, originally required within the first 30 days of the settlement agreement being put into place. Some of those were delayed just a little bit from revisions from the DOJ, so they've kind of been trickling in a little bit. But as you can see, there are just a whole lot of policies that have been updated, or procedures at least, regulations. But they've all, they've all come in front of you and are available also on the, on the website. So, these policy revisions are very extensive. And so, those policies revisions drive practice revisions, basically, in our buildings, and, and will kind of transform practice and how we, you know, train. Originally, how we train those changes is that we have sent out policy notifications to all staff, and we've asked them to just be aware that there's been a policy change first. Even doing that, I think, you know, has, has been initial notification, but we know that's not enough. Telling people that something has changed, and even providing initial training, depending on how big a change is, saying that we've trained it, depending on what that change is, sometimes isn't enough. So, we know that good training happens over time, and we loop back around and make sure that there's good understanding and that everything that we're doing supports those changes. And so, that just kind of maybe speaks to a little bit of the question that you just had. So, we can change a policy, but that won't necessarily change all the practice yet. That will happen as we get people understanding, you know, more and more over time. And I think that is probably a little bit more what, what Nicole was speaking to, that that requires more of a comprehensive plan. And that is more about our professional learning. That should and will happen over time for all of our staff. And specifically with the discipline changes, because all of our staff are, you know, involved in supporting students. And, you know, really, when we, when it comes down to discipline, that's really what it's about, is providing support for students. So, all of our staff are involved in supporting students. So, we just need to think about over time how we help staff know more and more about how to support the students that we have. So, that's not a, that's not a simple answer. It's a grand plan that we just have to keep revisiting all the time. So, that's a long answer to a short question. So, one of the key policy changes, though, has been about crisis prevention. And actually, the, the... the, the, this presentation, really, the requirement for this presentation really is around crisis prevention. And so that our public really understands the role of crisis prevention in the schools. And that really the key to the settlement agreement really is about crisis prevention. And that what we're really trying to do is prevent crisis from happening in our schools. And that, you know, a lot of the requirements in the settlement agreement really is to, in order to get to the point of crisis prevention. So Policy 613 drives a lot of those processes that, that hopefully will get to crisis prevention. So we, we know that crisis prevention is a lot better than intervention later, you know, that we would rather prevent a crisis from happening than respond to a crisis. But we need to have protocols available in every single building that tells our, that guides our staff to understand what should happen if a crisis were to transpire. And so, so we do have those protocols available in every building, and they are communicated to all staff members. And it really guides in following those policies, one of which was for physical restraint, guides what, what to do for team members if a physical restraint would be necessary. And even before that, like, how to, that, you know, we need to try to de-escalate students before we would ever physically restrain them. And those, you know, who should be doing physical restraints if that would become necessary? Those are people that should have received specific and intensive training to safely do such a thing. And the parents and public receive communication about this. The names of crisis prevention team members are available on our website. And so Policy 613 just drives all of this. That is just a new policy, and I don't think anything like this existed before. So as I said, one of the things that we've worked on a lot would be the policy updates and dissemination. You know, in an organization this large, just getting the policies out when there's been so many policy revisions, and then following up on that information and making sure that new employees, subs, people coming into the schools all the time, have that information. Because honestly, our policies are different than other schools. So just making sure that people have the right basic information is one thing. That professional learning and communication just all the time, and those processes that should maintain all of that professional learning and communication from here on out are those basic systems that we have set up and that we are, that we're working on maintaining now. Clarification, you know, we've had a lot of questions. And you would think something so explicitly written would be easy to interpret. And that's just not the case. You know, there have been a lot of questions that have come up from our buildings. We've had a lot of questions even just as the, you know, initial, people who needed to initially interpret the settlement agreement and to give guidance. So we've had to go back with questions a lot, just clarification around what some of the things mean, what some of the exact language mean. So some of that ongoing clarification. Alternatives, because we can't just say to people, "Don't do this." We have to say, "We're not doing this, but instead we're going to do this." What alternatives are there? And, and what, what do we do instead? What, what are the other things going to be? And, you know, as I said, that's a process over time. Coaching conversations and support, because, because again, I don't, you know, we, we really need to make sure that, that people are feeling supported, coached, because our, our folks working in our buildings have hard jobs. And they, you know, they need to know, "What am I supposed to do?" And how, how do I do it? And have the tools that they, that they need in order to serve our students. So that ongoing coaching and support, we know that, that we owe that to them. So we're, we're trying to do that. Reporting and record keeping, just the systems for, the reporting and record keeping that are required for monitoring of the agreement are incredibly extensive. There's extensive reporting requirements. And just setting up those processes has been a lot. And then meeting require, meeting, just meeting requirements of the agreement. I just, I want to, and I know I share the, when I say this, I know I'm speaking for our entire team here that's based out of this building, that all of these requirements and actions that we've done so far has just been, when I say "we," I really mean that our, our staff in buildings, they've just, I know every, all, all of the people in buildings that have been directly serving students, I know that they've, they've just done so much work. And we really, really, really appreciate it. And, and it's been hard work. There's nothing easy about it. So we just, I just really want to take this opportunity, you know, to tell, to tell people, our staff, just how much we really appreciate them. And that we know it's hard. And that, that we just recognize the amount and workload that they have. And I really mean that. So our next steps, to continue to refine our processes, just get better and better, and have them be more automatic so that people don't have to be thinking so hard all the time to, to keep all these processes going and underway. Building tools to assist our staff in buildings to implement the requirements, to help them, you know, remember what there's, what they need to be able to do all the time to meet the timelines, to get the next steps in place, so forth, so that they will be as free as possible to think about the students and not our processes. Build to, sorry, continue to support through ongoing coaching and professional learning, and I just can't possibly say enough about that. And revisiting that professional learning plan all the time, okay, what are people needing now? And how are we doing at that? And now what are people needing now? And what are we seeing now? And gathering input on components of the work and making needed, needed modifications, because that really is what good professional learning requires. And continuing to build the preventative strategies through implementation of the HRS and PBIS framework. And again, that prevention being so much better than, than intervention. And our, our students with significant needs really do benefit the most from the strategies that all kids benefit from. And any of those, those high-quality practices that we're building in every classroom will benefit students with the most need the most.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll defer to my fellow board members for questions. Director Borchardine.
Thank you so much for the work around this and for supporting our students and staff with, I know it's a heavy lift and there's a lot going on. So thanks so much for the dedication and the time that's being used. I do have a question about if we are sharing our process and strategies with any before or after-school programs where these students may be going, just to have that consistency there for the students and, and how behaviors or issues or interactions are, are going to be addressed.
And I think, so Nicole is our contact for our before and after-school programs. And maybe you can speak a little bit more to the training that they've received also, because I'm not sure if I, I don't know all the training that they've received. But I, I think there's some.
So whether it's our training before and after school, or even people that are in the buildings, we've tried to make sure they know about the changes in the policies. We've also, for example, did a training with some of our staff and some of the before and after school's care staff altogether on PBIS, probably about a month ago. It was since the holiday time. So we're trying to make sure there's that alignment, and we're using the same language and verbiage, and people are actually responding in the same way. So everybody has those trainings. And really, that's part of the DOJ agreement as well. So even conversations with CRPD and how can we partner together and what does this look like to make sure it's consistent practices across our system.
Excellent. Thank you.
Director Newman, did you have a question?
I want to say thank you, not only for the, the work that you're doing, but to all our staff that are, are bearing the brunt of this work. I know it'll make us stronger, but I just, my heart goes out to everybody who's, who's doing this work. So thank you so much.
Thanks for saying that.
Director Borchardine, another question?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Are there any community partners, like the ARC or Grantwood AEA, that are involved in this work in either supporting or supplementing?
Yes. Grantwood AEA is a critical partner for us in the work. They, they partner with us on pretty much everything involved in, in the settlement agreement, but particularly the training pieces and performing functional, functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention planning. And then, of course, they have their team representatives in every building, supporting the work. They're critical partners. They have been amazing at mobilizing resources for us. Grantwood AEA has been critical for us. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Merschbach?
I just wanted to get your opinion real quick. When it comes to the idea of crisis prevention and the new policy around it, would you say it would be easier for the staff in the buildings, you know, if there was smaller staff to student ratios? Is that something where the more people are in the building, are we going to do better preventing crises in the first place?
I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure if I can just say that, you know, categorically across the board. I mean, I, I think sometimes that, that could play, could play a factor, that could play a role. I mean, it really would depend on the situation, you know, the, what group we're talking about. I mean, it, it definitely could play a role. At times, if a group is too, too large, you know, maybe that could be a, a situation where it may be more likely that a crisis would occur, but not always.
Thank you.
Some of the biggest challenges coming up over the next few months, and what are some things that you think this board could do to be more supportive, or the most supportive possible for the work that needs to be done?
Thank you for asking that. I think our, I think our biggest challenge right now is just, it, it is always resources. And particularly, staff, just finding staff. You know, we, there's a teacher shortage, and even just being able to, you know, what you were talking about, sometimes with even like the group size and so forth. Well, we've had, like, for instance, special ed teacher posting, we have every single special ed teacher position posted that we've tried to hire all year long and, and haven't had applicants for those positions. So there are times where we would hire, but we don't have, you know, qualified or certified applicants. There are just some barriers that I'm, I'm not saying I think the board necessarily, you know, has control over. Sometimes the board does have control over resources and sometimes not. But we always need coaching for the people that we have, good professional learning, really, which is going to involve things like, you know, coaching and support for teachers. Because, you know, the, the people in the building are, they're the most important people. And, but unless we can support them, they're really, they're really, really are left hanging out there, which is not what we want. We do not want that. So I think just making sure that we have the resources to get, you know, the good structures available for people, and then the support to them. That, that is, that's our biggest, that's my biggest concern.
Appreciate that. Director Garlock?
Yes. Thank you for all of your work on this. And, and as Director Newman said, thanks to all the staff. This has been a heavy lift for all of you. I am curious about the crisis prevention teams. And if you're getting any feedback from them specifically about how it's going for them, are there improvements that they would like to see? And, you know, piggybacking on President Tominski's ask, is there anything we can do to help those teams be better equipped? Because like, if my understanding is correct, they're sort of the frontline in the building. And are we doing everything we can to support them?
Yeah. Really, the only feedback I've, honestly, the, people, honestly, this is, you know, for people who don't know, this is my first year in the district. I, I think people are incredibly hardworking here and amazing. Honestly, I, I really can say that. And I, I really have, you know, we're, we're asking them to do a lot. And, and some, you know, I feel like crisis teams in buildings have, have, I've really received very little feedback from teams saying that, you know, that they need a whole lot more, except that sometimes time. There just isn't enough, enough time in, in days. You know, we're taking people who are already busy and, and asking them to do one more thing. And I, I really do realize that. So we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what are ways that we can offset that time. And, you know, this, this agreement was, you know, signed in September. So we didn't have lead time to try to figure that out, you know, before a school year got started, which is one of the hard things. So I hope, you know, maybe we'll have some strategies for that going into a school year, too, where we have a little bit of an opportunity to plan some of those things. Because time is a real barrier for, for most people.
Sure. Yeah. Everyone, everyone in education wants more time.
Yes.
If only we could do that.
Right.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? The meeting is now adjourned, and the board will meet in exempt meetings.
I didn't, I renewed this whole board meeting thing. My name's Rachel. I have a child in Cedar Rapids District. And there are a couple of things that I would like to address, if possible.